We're not here to force you to agree with the person leading. Now, we kind of laid that out the first night. But now, you know, some people tell me... Well, usually they don't tell me. They're too afraid to tell me. Some people have told my wife through the years, "Your husband's a little intimidating." And that is really not my intention. I'm just enthusiastic and so excited. Because how in the world can having a personal relationship with the God who created this universe be dull and boring?
Amen.
And yet, I have to tell you as a typical traditional pastor, it was dull and boring. So if you see a little bit of zeal and enthusiasm in me, I'm so grateful to God. He got me out of the prison of religious tradition and began to open my eyes about what it means to really have a relationship with God and to experience His presence every day, if I'm willing. Now, if something I share with you bothers you, please understand, I'm not attempting to offend anybody. We did have a couple of people who were offended last week and left, and left their notebooks behind. And I just want to tell you, if you are so insecure about what you believe, that anyone who says something contrary to what you hold to offends you and you have to run away, then you might want to check what kind of ground you're standing on, okay? And I don't know particularly what it was. And if any of you know them, then maybe you could come talk to me. Because I certainly would apologize to them if my personality and my zeal and loudness sometimes offend you. Sometimes you just gotta crank it up to get it out. You know, and I always was envious of my wife. You know, I went to the Phoenix Symphony to hear her sing with the college choir several different times and everything. She babbles it out, and everybody smiles and claps. And I bellowed out, and people cower back. And it's not fair. They can get out what they're singing by singing loudly, and everybody's excited, and I get loud, and people, "Ooh," it's scary. Not intending to be that way, okay? So I just urge you, if anything troubles you, I'm not asking you to open your mouth, shovel funnel in it, and believe everything I say. What I'm hoping you will get from all of this is that God has placed at your disposal a tool that can unlock eternity and a whole new kind of life here in this world. And for most Americans, it sits and collects dust all week long. If you're lucky enough to go to a church that still teaches the Bible, maybe you dust it off on Sundays and take it in. And yet, the keys to eternity are right there. Many of us, even religious leaders, have missed it. I don't want you to miss it. God doesn't want you to miss it. And I'm hoping that these tools will equip you to delve in deeper and go for yourself and find out firsthand what God has to say. Question number 10. Once a person has experienced closeness to God, that position, that position of closeness to God will never change. And, you know, if you've got your two choices there, true or false, let's go read a little bit. Oh, we didn't sing our song. Blue Page, open up to your Blue Page. Now, we're gonna do something differently tonight on the Blue Page. We're gonna do... I'm gonna show you a shortcut where this might actually be a little bit more helpful to you. Instead of singing all of the verses, you know, "Let us sing the books of Moses, of Moses, of Moses. Let us sing the books of Moses, for he wrote the law; first Genesis, second Exodus, third Leviticus, fourth Numbers, and the fifth is Geronimo, the last of the law." What you can do is you can cut right to the names of the book. So we did verse 1, now verse 2. We're not gonna sing all of those others, just the books. There's Joshua, Judges, and the story of Ruth; first and second Samuel, and first and second Kings; there's first and second Chronicles, which give us the record; Ezra, Nehemiah, and Esther, the queen; and then the books of poetry; Job, the patient, salt of David, and the proverbs of a wise one; then Ecclesiastes, and the Song of Solomon; and the major prophets; Isaiah, Jeremiah, who wrote Lamentations; Ezekiel and Daniel, who were true to their God; and the minor prophets. Get a good breath. Usually you stand on one foot. So, we're looking at 2 Samuel. You remember it in the books of history. So if you turn to the middle of your Bible, you usually come to Psalms or Proverbs. Turn left and look for the books of history. Joshua, Judges, Ruth, two boys and a girl, three sets of twins; first and second Samuel, first and second Kings, first and second Chronicles. And if you'll back up, you're gonna go to the 2nd Samuel, the 10th chapter. Let's just ask the Bible this question. If a person is close to God at some point in their life, does that then mean that all of their days, they will remain close to God? Now, rationally, intellectually, when I think about this, once a person has been close to God, why would you ever want to get to a place where you're not close to God? Those of you who've experienced that. Now, it is a little bit scary, you know? Sometimes it's scary, being close to God. And so, in 2 Samuel, 2 Samuel, chapter 10, down to verse 10. And I've written the wrong address down. Let me see, it's 1st Samuel. If not, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna go online and... And in going online, I'm going to... It's 1st Samuel. Okay, right, right. And I'm sorry, I apologize. You know, you can't believe all the obstacles got in the pathway last week. And today was a much easier day, thank you, Lord. And very fortunate to be in there. So, we'll scratch that out. And let me just check again, make sure I'm in the right place. All right, it is 1st Samuel. Let it up, so put an X on that. And it's 1st Samuel, chapter 10. And this is at a particular time where, where in verse 1, Samuel was sent out to anoint a ruler over Israel. Remember what his name was? Saul. He became King Saul, the first king of Israel. Now, interesting thing about Saul. Why, why did the people want a king? Any of you recall looking at that or studying? Yes, ma'am, what did you see?
I saw that they wanted a king because the surrounding tribes had kings.
Yep, that's right. All the other groups around them had their own king. What was appealing about that? See, what was appealing about that was that whenever the surrounding tribes or nations had a problem or an enemy come against them, they had a guy that would be in charge of mustering the army, getting them together, and going out and fighting the battle. And they actually said, "We want a king who will go out and fight our battles for us." Now, see, up until that time, whenever there was a problem, the way God addressed it is the people would have to pray and seek God. And God would raise up a leader. And then God would tell the leader, "Okay, get the guys, get the men, get the troops together, and go out and fight this enemy, and I'll go with you." You remember, that's how Gideon wound up being selected. At one time, Gideon, God said, you know, "Gather these men together and go fight your enemies out here, the Midianites who keep coming in and stealing your crops every year at harvest time." And so, he got ready to go, and so many men came. God said, "That's too many." And so, he said, "All right, have them go down and drink. Everybody that laps like a dog, get on this side of the river. Everybody that scooped the water out and drank it, get on the other side. The majority lapped like a dog." He said, "Okay, all of y'all go home. We have too many soldiers for this battle." And so, he pared it down. And he did that because he wanted them to know that the victory he was about to give them was by his might and power, not by the number or quantity of soldiers that they had. And they went out and won a great victory. So, was the system broken? My daughter-in-law tells me that... That's not very good. She wanted something different. She didn't like my... She wanted me to go for the whole night and not do that. The system was working. Now, I tell you, there's something really interesting about this because... Because that's kind of what the children of Israel said when God brought them to Mount Sinai as they came out of Egypt. He said, "Moses said, 'Tell all the men to come up the mountain. I have some words for them.'" And of course, you know, he was given the 10 commands. And they were all afraid. And they said that there was earthquakes going on, lightning, shaking thunder, they were scared. They said, "No, Moses, you go check and see what God says, and then come back and tell us, and we'll do it." But that was not God's plan. God's plan was, all the heads of families and heads of households, you come up here, and I'm gonna have a conversation with you. It's interesting, this human nature thing. If we can outsource responsibilities to somebody else, we like that. We'll let them worry about it. And you know, God told Samuel to tell him, "You don't want a king." They said, "Oh, yeah, we want a king." He said, "You don't want a king? You know what the king's gonna do to you? He's gonna take the best of your property. He's gonna take the best of your crops. He's gonna take his sons and daughters, and they will become his servants. You're not gonna want that." And they said, "Yeah, we do." So God says, "That's what you want? There you go, have the heaping helping." Didn't turn out so well. But it's interesting, this thing in human nature. Because, I don't know if you noticed a little parallel, but people in America today do the same thing. Now, Pastor, you go and study and check it out. And I'm gonna trust you to do all that digging while I'm out here in the world. And then I'll come in on Sunday and check with you, and I'll throw some money to, you know, to help, help take care of your needs. You just go keep checking with God, and then you do the work for Him, and pour it in on Sundays. I've seen it, every church where I've been a pastor, there were people that did that. I did a stupid thing one time, and I said, "We're not meeting any more times on Sundays. I'm not gonna keep doing all the work for you, and then you just come in here and expect me to shovel it out for you. You're gonna have to dig it out yourself." What I did is I met with a group of teachers and said, "Okay, here's what we're gonna do. We're studying right now, here's what God's showing us. Go to homes and have Bible study at home, and share it with people out there." That didn't work out too well. Most people are a little too lazy to go dig out things for themselves. So, that's what led up to 1 Samuel 10. And verse 1, it says, "Samuel took the flask of oil, poured it on his head." This is Saul. And he says, "Has not the Lord anointed you a ruler over his inheritance? And go from him." And then down to verse 6, it says, "Then the Spirit of the Lord will come upon you, and he prophesies and tells him, 'He'll come on you mightily. You'll prophesy with him,' and he said, 'You'll be changed into another man.' And when it went..." It says in verse 9, "He went, he turned his back to leave Samuel, the prophet. God changed his heart, and all those signs came about on that day. And when they came to the hill, there was a group of prophets met him, and the Spirit of God came on him." This is Saul. "So he prophesied among them." And so, the power of God fell on Saul. And he's prophesying. He's proclaiming the word of God and the truth of God to all the people. And by the way, there became a common saying, "Is Saul also among the prophets?" They're like, "Hmm, what's he doing? He's not from a prophet's family or lineage? And yet, is he out there a moment?" Let's go over to chapter 15 now. 1 Samuel 15 still. Love hearing those pages turning out there. That means you... Sounds like you found it. You're looking for it in your own Bible. By the way, if the Lord shows you something when you're studying the Bible, I urge you, I encourage you, and that's part of the reason we have these markers, mark it down, make a note. And then, now, those of you that like to do that electronically, I would encourage you to try to use one of the apps where you can make some notes. Because I'm telling you, this book of mine, if my house burned down tonight over in Cassagram, it'd be a little bit of a pain, but you know what? The only thing that really I would be heartbroken to lose is this right here. Because for 30 years, I've been making notes in there as God's taught me something, and I'll write what God showed me. Sometimes I thought I understood something, I had to come back and put an X through it and correct myself. There were things that I thought I knew what that means, and then I'd come along and go, "Ooh, I missed it. That's not right." Have to back up and make corrections. Right in here is a treasure trove of the wisdom and knowledge that God's given to me about certain passages of Scripture down through the years. And I urge you to do that. Oh, by the way, I've actually been criticized for doing that. So I was teaching a conference, and people were told, "You shouldn't go to the conference because that guy writes in his Bible. He's adding to the word of God." They were told that. "Stay away!" So, 1 Samuel 15. I encourage you, make some notes. Write down what God's showing you. It'll help bring it back to mind at the proper time. 1 Samuel 15:10. "Then the word of the Lord came to Samuel, saying, 'I regret that I've made Saul king.'" This is what God says. "I regret that I've made Saul king, for he's turned back from following me and has not carried out my commands. And Samuel was distressed and cried out to the Lord all night." Now, I don't know about you. There haven't been that many times in my life where I have cried all night in distress. There have actually been a few. I mean, I have two brothers who died. One was murdered, one died suddenly at age 44 of a heart attack. It broke my heart. My daughter-in-law, who's sitting over here, was in an accident. In fact, March will be... Is that gonna be nine years now?
No, seven.
Only seven?
Because Caleb was nine.
That's right. Caleb was a year and a half old. And we got a call at 2:30 in the morning, didn't know if she was gonna live. She was in a coma for two days. I still have the damage on the back of my pickup. It was 2:30 in the morning. We're backing out of our house in Colorado. It's in March, but it was warm enough. It was raining instead of snowing. There was snow on the ground, but it was raining. And the phone's ringing, and my wife's crying. So I'm backing out, and I'm trying to talk on the phone, and it's dark outside, and I backed one vehicle into another. You know, it didn't matter. Because we needed to get to Phoenix. It rained the whole way appropriately. When we got to John C. Lincoln Hospital, our son was sitting in the waiting area outside of ICU in the dark. I've only had a few of those in my whole life. Samuel loved Saul. He wept over him all night long. That's how much he loved Saul. And was so disappointed that he got full of himself. He'd actually just erected a monument to himself to brag about his great victory. And God's the one who's giving him the victories all along the way. But it went to his head. And so, Samuel, in verse 12, rose early in the morning to meet Saul. And it was told Samuel, saying Saul came to Carmel. He set up a monument for himself, and he's turned and proceeded down the Gilgal. And verse 13, Samuel came to Saul. And Saul says, "Oh, bless you, the Lord. I've carried out the command of the Lord." And Samuel said, "What then is the bleeding of the sheep in my ears and the lolling of oxen which I hear?" And Saul go, "Oh, well, we brought those from the Amalekites, for the people spared the best of the sheep and oxen to sacrifice to the Lord, your God. You don't have any problem with a big offering being brought down to the tabernacle, do you? Because they brought this back to give as offerings. And said, 'But the rest of it, we utterly destroy.'" And Samuel said to Saul, "Wait, let me tell you what the Lord said to me last night." And he said, "Speak." And he said, "Is it not true, though you were little in your own eyes, you were made head of the tribes of Israel, and the Lord anointed you king over Israel in verse 18? And the Lord sent you on a mission, said, 'Go utterly destroy the sinners, the Amalekites, and fight against them until they're exterminated?'" And you go, "Wait a minute, now, if that troubles you a little, did God really say, 'Go'?" Yes, he said, "Go kill the men, women, children, animals, destroy, burn all their possessions." Well, that doesn't sound like Santa Claus, does it? I thought he's all happy-go-lucky, and God's a God of love. Folks, he is a God of love. But just as much as he is a God of love and gave his own Son to save mankind, he is a God of justice and righteousness and holiness. He's not more of one than the other, he's both. And the Amalekites, if you go back and study, as they were coming across the desert, they would pick off the stragglers, the people who were sick and were lame and the young. And they would take them as captives or kill them and take their property. And God said, "The time for judgment has come. I want you to go utterly destroy this people." But God, but Samuel, we brought it back to give us a big offering. And he says in verse 19, "Why then did you not obey the voice of the Lord, but you rushed on the spoil and did what was evil in his sight?" And then Saul wants to argue with Samuel. "I did obey the voice of the Lord, and I went on a mission, and I brought back Agag, the king of Amalek, and utterly destroyed the Amalekites. But the people took some of the spoiled sheep, oxen, and the choicest things devoted to destruction to sacrifice to the Lord, your God, at Gilgal." And here is one of those monumental verses that you should mark if you don't have it marked there. Samuel says in verse 22, "Has the Lord as much delight in burn offerings and sacrifices as in obeying the voice of the Lord? Behold, to obey is better than sacrifice, and to heed than the fat of rams; for rebellion is as the sin of divination or witchcraft. And in subordination is as iniquity and idolatry. And because you rejected the word of the Lord, he also rejected you from being king." That position never changed? False. Folks, this relationship with God thing is dynamic. It's moving. God's doing things in you. He's moving forward. And it is required that we continue to seek God, to stay in tune. Many churches tell their people, "When you go through some experience, pray the center's prayer, get baptized, speak in tongues, go on missions trip, take the sacrament. You've got it now. You've got this special place with God." Folks, I just want you to be introduced to the reality that that's not the case in the Bible. There are actually a couple of other places where Saul is filled with the Holy Spirit. And yet, do you know how his life ended? He committed suicide. Can move to that church. And in the end, here's a guy who's been close to God. He's been filled with the Spirit of God. He's had that taste. But some other things drew his heart away. So, where does that leave you and me? This should serve, if nothing else, at least, to be a warning. Tonight, we're really thinking about the area of proof and accuracy in terms of what the Bible says. But the story about Erastus is one of those that just really struck me and made me laugh, and maybe it'll make you laugh too. In Romans 16, there's this simple little passing statement. I'll just read it to you. Now, on your sheet there, it says Acts 19:22. That's one of the mentions of Erastus. If you'd like to write this one down. I like this one a little better. If you want, jot down Romans 16:23 and 2 Timothy 4:20. Those are two other places this same gentleman is mentioned. And the reason I like Romans 16:23 is what you will hear. "Gaias host to me, and to the whole church greet you; Erastus, the city treasurer greet you, and Quattress, the brother." So that's the Romans 16:23 reference that's telling us that Paul was sending these people along. He specifically names some. And in that naming, he mentions the fact that Erastus was the city treasurer in the city of Corinth. For a number of years, those who were critics of the Scripture said, "See, there's never ever been found anything that would indicate that there was ever such a person as Erastus. And lo and behold..." Hey, brother, glad to see you. Here's what, this is what we're working on, but I just jumped back over here to some of our archaeology stuff, and we're reading about Erastus. Where, where did Erastus go? Oh, there he is, right there. Okay. Thank you. So, sheet number 14. So, I just printed this for you. It says, "This is the only time that Erastus is mentioned in Acts, though always mentioned." And then I gave you those references, Romans 16:23, where he calls in the city treasurer. And at the close of the letter to the Christians at Rome, Paul states, "Erastus is the treasurer." Then, at the end of his second letter to Timothy, he mentions him again. And if you're going down to the third paragraph, "During an archaeological excavation of Corinth in 1929, a first-century pavement was uncovered which contains the following inscription: Quote, 'Erastus, pure curator, and Aliad laid this pavement at his own expense. The pavement was in the public square, and Erastus had apparently paid for it in return for his election to the Aliadship.'" Well, it was like being a council, is what he's saying here. And of course, how they know that he did that to pay him back for it? Personally, I would say to the smart guy who wrote this, "How do you know that? It may just be that he was tired of going up and down muddy streets and had it paved." And they put a little marker there that said, "Erastus, the city treasurer." So, isn't that amazing? They criticize the Scripture and say, "Oh, you can't rely on it. We've never found anything there was anybody named Erastus." Lo and behold, in 1929, they find it. Guess what they say now? Well, all you have to do is keep reading. Because this guy even goes on and tells us now, unfortunately, he says, "The matter's more complicated. The Greek word that Paul uses and denotes treasurer is not the equivalent of the Latin word, which refers to someone of a higher office in ancient municipal government." Erastus may have been promoted to this office after it was written. And if either of these explanations is true, then the existence of Erastus's job and his city residence have been confirmed by archaeologists. "But there are further complications. The name Erastus was very common." Well, isn't that funny? Before they found this, they criticized the Bible and said, "We've never found anybody named Erastus who was a treasurer." So God gives them a rock with the guy's name on it, saying that he was the treasurer. But there are many, many people named Erastus back then. And we don't know that this particular treasurer of the city of Corinth wasn't just one of 50 treasurers named Erastus. I still like... So, I wanted this to be in there because I just want you to see. Is, do we know absolutely that this is the guy Paul talked about? Well, of course not. I wasn't there when they put the stone down, never met the guy. But you know what? I'm planning to shake his hand one day. And the sooner the better. Yes, sir. But this shows you how, when people make up their mind to keep a cloud of questions over whether the Bible is reliable or not, they'll go to any lengths to describe it. And I laugh about things like this because I think God goes, "Oh, yeah? There you go. Have a rock that says, 'Erastus, city treasurer.'" "Well, but you know, that's still not true." They do the tap dance all around. Okay. So I understand this is what you're up against, but I want you to know, it's like God just flings a little wrench in the works and says to those that are willing to have an open mind, "Guess what? People in this book are real. Things I preserve for you here really did happen. Get over yourself." All right. Meanwhile, back at the ranch, Moses was in the bull rush just when Pharaoh's daughter came down with waters. All right, let's go to question four. Now, what I'm gonna do here, I'm gonna just do this a little bit differently. Oops. Just a second. Now, this is what this did to me the other day. It shut down, started up, and locked up again. Okay, let's go to question one, and eventually the electronics will catch up with us here. Number one, number the following in order of importance of each according to the Bible. And I've given you four statements here. Which is most important according to the Scripture? Theological accuracy, which means that your beliefs are accurate with what the Scripture says. Second option is proper ceremonial actions and conduct. You know, there are one church that teaches that, because they're a New Testament church, and in the New Testament, it doesn't mention instruments, therefore, you cannot have instruments in your church meetings. It's ungodly. It's not Scripture. Okay. Personal, a proper personal conduct. You gotta be living morally and all in just the right fashion. And the fourth option is about truth being a moral quality, an essential quality. Now, I'm not gonna tell you definitively, because I'm not gonna argue each one of these points tonight, but let me just tell you the fashion that I would put it in, based on the experience that I have. And I would go this way. Number one is truth. And the reason that I say that has to do with the Scripture I would like for you to reference. If you look at the next page, you see it says, "Session for Scripture Answers." What I've done is I've listed Scriptures that are related to the questions. So you see where it says, "2 Thessalonians 2"? Let's turn there, would you? 2 Thessalonians 2. Now, you remember General Electric Power Company? Galatians, Ephesians, Philippians, Colossians, and around the power plant? You have the power poles. So you've got the Ts, they look like power poles. 2 Thessalonians, 2 chapter. "And that lawless one will be revealed, whom the Lord will slay with the breath of his mouth." Now, Paul is writing what's called eschatology. It's about Scriptures about the end times. When Jesus talked about the end times in Matthew 24, it's referred to as the great eschatological discourse. So if you hear that term, don't be intimidated by it. It's just something theologians like to use as code words to each other to show how smart they are. Okay? Good question. All right, Lynn, can you spell eschatology? Probably?
Probably. Let me sure on the phone.
Okay, she'll look it up for us here, eschatology. So, he's talking about end times, but what we need to see in this passage is not specifically about the end times. It's about a relationship with God in general. "And the lawless one will be revealed, verse 8, the Lord will slay with the breath of his mouth, ringed to an end by the appearance of his coming." That is verse nine. "The one whose coming is in accord with the activity of Satan with," look at this, "all power and signs and false wonders." Hmm, interesting. Be sure to notice in the Scripture, for everything that God does, Satan has accounted for. That should keep us on guard. Next week, we'll probably look at the existence of evil in the world and maybe address a little bit more what the Bible has to say about why there is evil in... You know, the first two questions any little kid asks. "Okay, if God made the world, who made God?" That's very rational. That's good thinking. Your grandkids ask you that, your kids ask you that. Pat them on the head, "Good job, you're thinking. You're using your brain. You didn't check it at the door when we came to church. You brought it with you. That's good." Of course, the answer is not very satisfying. Okay? And I'm not even gonna go there. The second question they ask is, "Well, if God's a loving God, then why is there evil?" Good question. Glad you asked that. We'll look at that some next week. Till then, you just have to toss and turn and wonder. So, by the way, those are good questions. We need to ask every question. Don't cower from any of them. If you march up to me in a little bit and say, "I don't believe one word you said. I don't believe this book." You know what I say about it? Good luck. Okay? I don't have to defend this. If it's true, it stands on its own strength and its own merit. And after centuries of intellectuals and smart people trying to explain it away, trying to destroy it, trying to discredit it, here it is today, thirty million copies a year being sold because it changes people's lives when they study. That's one. And so, false signs and wonders, and verse 10, "With all the deception of wickedness, for those who perish be caused." Paul is about to tell us why many people are perishing, will perish, because they did not receive the love of the truth so as to be saved. This verse of Scripture just told you and me, greatest priority, we're gonna know God if we're gonna have a relationship with Him, requires that we love the truth. Lynn, would you spell for everybody eschatology?
It's spelled unlike it sounds. E-S-C-H-A-T-O-L-O-G-Y.
C-H-A?
C-H-A.
C-H-A, eschatology. That's the study of things relating to the end times. Okay. So, you don't receive the love of the truth, you can't be saved. Being saved is a pretty important subject in the Scripture. Jesus talking to one of the leaders of the people of Israel at that time says, you know, "Not only must you be saved, you must be born again." Interesting. But that's not gonna happen unless you receive a love for the truth. Now, get to know God a little bit here in this verse. Grow up. Get away from Santa Claus. Listen to what it says next. "And for this reason..." What reason is that? That they didn't receive a love of the truth. "For this reason, God will send on them a deluding influence, so that they might believe what is false, in order that they all may be judged who didn't believe the truth, the truth, the truth, had no place for the truth, but they took pleasure in riches." Number one, if you're gonna list these, number one in importance, number one, love of the truth. Now, where do you wanna go from there? I would have to tell you that probably beyond that, the second most important thing is probably your personal conduct. See, it used to be for me that I thought theological accuracy was paramount. That's the number one thing. Everybody needs theological accuracy. And being the kind of Baptist that I was raised, we were really proud of the fact that we were more theologically accurate than anybody. We didn't want anything to do with those American Baptists who were a bunch of liberals, or those conservative Baptists who were a bunch of liberals, because we were theologically accurate. So we thought. So I thought. I bought into that. But I have to tell you, there are some passages of Scripture that indicate that there actually are some things more important to God than theological accuracy. Now, I'm telling you, I could get thrown through the window in some places to say that. You say, "Well, Rick, that's just your opinion." It is my opinion, but I tell you why it's my opinion. Because Paul's knew some things about salvation that Peter, James, and John did not know. And God did not send Paul to correct that for thirteen years. Does that sound like theological accuracy is at the top of God's list? Now, you say, "Oh, wait a minute, God didn't care about faith?" Oh, no, wait a minute. Don't confuse the two. Okay? In fact, let's look at Webster's definition for truth. That's your second page, right there. And this I found, and I've tried to give you references. This is webster-dictionary.net is where I found this one. It's free on the internet. I just put in dictionary, about a hundred thousand came up. You could choose any one. Listen to what it says about truth. "The quality or being true, conformity to fact or reality, exact accordance with which, with that which is, has been, or shall be." Exact, equal to that which is, has been, or shall be. Now, there's another use of the word truth, and that is ruling, conformity to a rule, exactness, close correspondence with an example, or a mood, or an object, or imagination. And then they'll say, "Plows to go true depend on the truth of the ironwork." Now, that's a little bit of an older English usage, back when America was agricultural country, and everybody knew about plows. A plow, to be true depended on the truth of the ironwork. In other words, is it gonna cut straight furrows, or is it gonna go off and go askew? So that's another use. And they go on and, and isn't it interesting that Webster's keeps quoting the Bible to illustrate truth? Do you see down here, Zechariah 8:16, "Speak, ye every man, the truth to his neighbor." "I long to know the truth here of at large." That's a Shakespeare. "Truth depends, the truth depends on, or is only arrived at by a legitimate deduction from all the facts which are truly material." So now you're getting some various definitions depending on the subject matter of where you're going with truth. What we're talking about here in the Bible is conformity to, or the reality that is in exact accordance with that which is. So, this thing about the truth with God is number one. Jesus Christ said, "I am the way..." The truth. And the life. Say, "Well, okay, now what does that mean? Does that mean that it's, that Jesus is the truth about thermal dynamics?" Well, you know, you could probably get out and argue about that. You know, if Jesus really, I mean, you see the truth about everything? Jesus is the truth about life, and existence, and relationship with our Creator. Jesus is the embodiment of the truth. Do you know that what we have right here is the printed form of the truth? Jesus is the physical embodiment and live human action of the truth. You wanna know the truth about life and the way it's to be lived? Look at Jesus Christ. And by the way, he said, "If you believe in me, what I'm doing, you're gonna do. The works that I do, you will do." How many churches have you been at and you looked at all the people that you went to church with and said, "Man, they are just like Jesus." Oh, it turned off. I turned it off. But folks, that's what Jesus said the normal church is supposed to be. Do you know that the church in Acts was not a super church? The church in Acts is the normal, average, run-of-the-mill church submitted to Jesus. And yet, in my sixty years, I've never been a part of one quite like that. We've gotten close here recently. We're moving on. We're not stopping. You know, when I was a pastor here in Arizona, they always wanted us to be like the churches in Texas. When I lived in western Colorado, they all wanted to have a connection to the church in Texas. I'm not trying to mimic Johnny Manziel. I'm mimicking the Baptist churches in Colorado. Send the money, send the money. Welfare churches. Yeah, that's what they were. When I became pastor of the church, they said, "Yeah, we got this church in Texas wants to come and put on our Bible school." And I said, "I want you to think with me for a minute about that." So they come in and they use our facility, they go out in our community, and they get the teenagers, the young people, and even the adults in the community. And they come in, and we let these people from Texas teach the classes and try to help these people, and maybe some of them even confess that they believe in Jesus. And when they leave, guess what happens? We never see those people again. God's given us the job to minister to the people in our community. And I said, "We're only gonna have Vacation Bible School when you, right here, are ready to be a teacher and start working with and ministry in those different age groups, and then we'll have Bible school, and then we're gonna connect with the community." And the first year we did it, we had a hundred and fifty people come. Man, this is a town of a thousand people. We had a hundred and fifty people in our Vacation Bible School. And guess what? Before long, that's how many we're running at our church that used to run eighteen. Because we weren't outsourcing our responsibility to some rich church down in the Bible then. We were taking our responsibility with it. The rest of the story I'll give to you in a little time. And so, the way I would put it, okay, and I'm not telling you that you're wrong, I just want you to know that the top of the list with God is truth. And I believe the second is your personal conduct. Jesus said, "The whole Bible can be summarized in two statements. Love God with all your heart, mind, soul, and strength, and love your neighbor as yourself." You see, if you love the truth, it immediately impacts your personal conduct. And then I would say that you could probably put as third, theological accuracy. We need to know accurately what the Bible says and conform our lives with it. And then the very last thing that I would put on the list is ceremonial actions. And we can get into the things that different denominations have been fighting about for hundreds of years, about communion, and about the baptism, and the Lord's Supper, and sacraments, and different things like that. But they're certainly not at the top of the list in God's point of view. Look at number two. "On a scale of one to ten, with ten being most important, studying and understanding the Bible is how important according to Jesus." Okay? And so, if you look at your answer list, go with me to Luke chapter 10, and then we're gonna take a break. Luke chapter 10, Jesus is in Bethany. You won't find that in the Scripture right here, but by comparing and seeing what's going on, you find out that Mary and Martha, sisters, lived in Bethany. Their brother was Lazarus, friend of Jesus. Luke chapter 10. So you got to your Gospels, Matthew, Mark, and Luke, and then John, before the letters. Luke chapter 10. Okay. "As they were traveling, he entered a certain village." If you compare, you know that this is Bethany, a little community outside of Jerusalem. "And a woman named Martha welcomed Jesus into her home. She had a sister called Mary, who moreover was listening to the Lord's word, seated at his feet. But Martha was distracted with all her preparations, and she came up to him." So here, Jesus is teaching the word of God, speaking, and Martha storms right in, and here's what she says, "Jesus! Lord, don't you care that my sisters left me to do all the serving alone? Then tell her to help me." It's like she really thought that was the most important thing to Jesus. I have two sisters. I can appreciate and understand that. We usually read their temperature emotionally by how they played the piano they were practicing for church on Sunday. And there were times it was... And so, Martha just assumes that Jesus was bothered about it, and here's his response. "Martha, Martha, you are worried and bothered about so many things." But only a few things are necessary." Listen to what Jesus says, don't miss this. Jesus, through whom this whole world was created, God incarnate, Emmanuel, God with us. Jesus says, "There's really only one thing that is absolutely necessary." Now, don't cheat, don't, don't read on, stop. Look up. It's only one thing's necessary. Well, you can live a long time without food, but you can't live very long without water. It's really cold, we gotta have clothes. It is nice to have shelter, because even here in central Arizona, amazing, it rained today, it rained. Jesus the Christ said, "There's really only one thing that is absolutely necessary." One thing. Gotta get baptized, gotta take communion, gotta pay your tithes. One thing. And he simply says, "Mary has chosen the good part which shall not be taken away from her." I drew a little arrow in my Bible, and I don't remember when, but I was just so astounded when I saw this. I drew an arrow back to verse 39, where it says, "She was seated at his feet, listening to his word." How important, on a scale of 1 to 10, is studying and understanding the Bible according to Jesus Christ? To 10. He said, "More than you need food and drink, you need the word of God." That's what the Bible says about itself. Do you see why I'm so driven to try to help people get a better handle on their Bible so they can read and study it? I'm driven for that. I'm not trying to get you to go to anybody's church. I'm not trying to get you to put some money somewhere. I'm a beggar who found some life and some bread in the buried book that I carried around my whole life, and even preached on Sundays, and I didn't get a fraction of it. Went right by me. And yet, I now know that Jesus says, "That's the one thing that is absolutely essential in your life." I think we need to give a little more importance to Bible study. You know, I love worship. I mean, I drive the guys nuts at work, 'cause every day I put music on this and blasted on the screen. That's how I used to wake up my sons at home when my poor kids were still at home. I rattled the windows with praise music. "Get up, boys! We're going Bible study!" That may be part of the reason they like loud music. One of my sons used to say, when he was taking a nap, "Daddy, could you put on bloody sweaty tears in my eyes?" Yes, that was back before I really discovered great Christian worship, when we were playing bloody sweaty tears, and he called it, "Would you play bloody sweaty tears in my eyes?" Four. He now has his own rock band, writes music, so I guess something stuck from all of that. And it's very intriguing. One of these nights, I might play just one for you. Because it's pretty astounding, the spiritual truth that God shows our kids, and we share it with them, we love them through their mistakes, we keep that relationship open, and point them to Jesus. So, how important? He says, "The one thing that's necessary." Another thing that's necessary tonight is to stand up and take a little break, 'cause your mind can only comprehend what your seat can endure. I wanna talk about, just for a minute, this thing about truth. Truth and honesty. This is, now those of you giving snacks, just go right ahead, you're not bothering me a bit. Don't worry, I've talked right over all kinds of stuff. Sometimes churches are not forthright in what they tell their congregation. You remember a couple weeks ago, I was telling you about the Mormons claiming that the Book of Mormon was being used by the Smithsonian Institute to do studies here in the Americas? And there were so many Mormons that were being told that. They, of course, trusted their church leaders to tell them the truth, that the Smithsonian Institute had to adopt an official letter. And in this official letter, they explained that the Smithsonian Institute is not using the Bible, and that the people talked about in the Book of Mormon bear no resemblance to the people in the Americas. That was adopted in 1983, and about 10 years later, they got enough flak from political powers that be that they toned it down a little. I still haven't been able to find a copy of the original letter. But they basically said, "Your book that you believe in bears no resemblance to reality in America." That's basically what Smithsonian did. Why would religious leaders tell things like that to their congregation? Just, I'm not asking for you to answer, I just want you to let your mind go to work for a little while. Now, sometimes it's because people have an agenda. And they believe that their purpose is noble enough that if they have to lie in order to support it, then it's really okay. And a couple of the questions that I have tonight are really trying to relate to that. And, and one of them is question number four. Now, I know I skipped over three, but I just wanna go to question four just for a moment. No, no, wrong one. Let's, let's just back up. Let's just back up, and let's talk about this thing about, about truth, and the fact that truth is the most important. Now, I don't wanna offend anybody tonight, but I want you to understand that in our present world, with all the resources available to really find out factually about any issue, there is massive misinformation. And like, and I'm just gonna tell you, you know, I'm not saying this to offend you, but you know what, if it's true, it's true. The Mormon leaders have lied to their people. Now, you believe anything else, you can believe whatever you wanna believe, but they lied to them, telling them the Smithsonian uses their book. It was a lie. And there's no getting around that. And what is number one importance to God? Truth! But lying is okay if you're doing it for a good cause. You see, that's the philosophy that is now being promoted in our world. So I wanna just illustrate it in another issue. I'll tell, I'll, I'll say this before I start. My wife and I have neither one been smokers. Our parents, neither one smoked. Now, our kids did when they left home, but, in fact, one time I put a cigarette in my mouth to show a lady in my church how bad it looked. But I've never smoked a cigarette, just they never had any interest in that. So I'm not in favor or promoting smoking. I've been an athlete most of my life, and, and I just assume maintain things as best I can, 'cause the odds are stacked against me, 'cause I've been kicking around here for a few years. But I wanna tell you that you're being lied to about secondhand smoke. And you say, "Well, Rick, what does that have to do with anything?" I want you to understand the nature of the world in which we live. And in the year 2003, and by the way, you can go, you can just put this in, my wife put it right on the iPad, boom, up came this study. "Study shows no association between passive smoke and health risks." And guess what? They criticized the research! Well, what kind of research they do? They, did they just go out and interview three or four people? This report that was published by the British Health Journal, and I don't know specifically which one originally, but it came out in 2003. It was a 38-year study, yes, I said 38-year study, of 100,000 Californians about the effects of secondhand smoke. And so, May 15, 2003, a controversial new study. You know why it's controversial? Because it contradicts an agenda that a group has. That's why it's controversial. You need to, when somebody says, "Oh, that person's controversial," well, you might just take a look and say, "Hmm." By the way, Jesus was controversial because of what? Truth! And he was murdered for it. "A controversial new study that questions the health risk of being exposed to secondhand smoke, a factor often said to contribute to some 50,000 American deaths each year." And by the way, if you dig into this, you know what that number is? It's a lie to promote an agenda. I'm not in favor of smoking, okay? I hated it when I used to have to sit next to somebody on an airplane that smoked. But folks, are we gonna be lovers of the truth? Or is it okay if you have a good motive to lie? You see, that's what church leaders do all the time. "We've got a good cause, it's okay if I know that the Bible says something different, but I'm not gonna tell my congregation that, it's okay for me to lie." This 50,000 number is a lie. It's a lie they made up to promote their agenda. The research comes out, and what they said is, and it's the British Medical Journal, that's actually the title of it, British Medical Journal, "Shows no measurable rates of heart disease or lung cancer among non-smokers who ever lived with smokers, and reports only a slight increased risk of chronic obstructive pulmonary disease." "Many health agencies, including U.S. Attorney General, have long said secondhand smoke boosts the risk of heart disease by about 30% and lung cancer by 25%." Research says ain't so. And you can go on and read this whole thing. 38 years, they studied 100,000 people, and they came back and said, "There is no health risk discernible from being around secondhand smoke." And of course, you know, all these new laws that they're coming up with are supposedly to protect the workers at a place where somebody smokes. But it's okay to lie, and say 50,000 people a year die from that. It's okay to lie, because it's for a good cause. Now, why am I bringing that up? Because if you're gonna walk with God, you need to be a lover of the truth, and you need to quit being naive. Just because somebody comes out with something that supports what you believe in, you might just check and see, is this really accurate? I just wanna know the truth. Okay, I just wanna know the truth. Quit telling us lies for our own good, or because it's a good cause. Okay? See, religion does the same thing that politics does. What I find fascinating is, the political mess that America's in today is an exact image of the mess in the religious world in America. I'm telling you. Now, if that bothers you, just plop it back here and let it simmer a little while. But folks, it's time that we become lovers of the truth. And when somebody gives you something they claim is a fact, then we need to step back and say, "Well, hmm, is that really so?" A man was being interviewed, and I'm sorry, I don't know his name, but if you wanna know, my buddy Dennis Prager, you can probably go to his website and find it out. But he's the foremost homeless advocate in America, and he's been saying that there are 3 million homeless people in America today. And finally, in an interview, somebody says, "Where is the study, or the research, or surveys that back this up?" And you know what he said? "There is none. I made it up." He admitted, he just came right out and said, "I am lying. Because it's for a good cause, it's okay to lie." Is that what the Bible says? Heather, this little contraption, just a little switch there.
Wait, there's a switch, just turn it on.
Turn it back and forth. All right. Now folks, I'm just throwing that out there because I'm telling you, it's time that we quit being naive. Just because somebody says something that you, that supports what your position is, you better not just grab a hold of it and say that it's true. You know, I have, let me just throw another one out, and then we'll press on. Did you hear about the big blizzard? Now, according to computer models, New York City was supposed to get the biggest snow in its history. They closed the freeways, they closed the airports, they closed the subways, because 24 hours before, the model said, "This is what's gonna happen." Guess what? It didn't happen in New York City. Now, it did happen out there. By the way, these are the same people who have models that tell us the temperature's gonna be hotter 100 years from now. If you don't quit driving your pickup truck. And you know, it used to be that when they talked science, they said to me, "Here are the facts." Now, what they say to me is, "Rick, don't you believe in anthropomorphic global warming? That man has caused global warming?" Well, I don't know whether there is or not, but I can tell you, if their model isn't accurate 24 hours ahead, I'm supposed to believe that it's telling me what it's gonna be in 67 years? A really big one, I wish I had both of them here. Now folks, we need to be just as wise when it comes to the Bible. Somebody tells you, "Thank God for baptism." I mentioned that last week, and perhaps that may have offended somebody, but my daughter-in-law's grandpa that passed away at the ceremony, they were so glad for baptism, 'cause that meant that he would go to heaven. He was a God-fearing, godly man. And what God had to say to him on the day he stood before him had nothing to do with him getting baptized in his Lutheran church. Sorry. That may have helped him in his walk, good. But folks, it's time we quit being naive, and we look at what's really there. We better start loving the truth. And I think the truth about everything. You know, when... I'll just throw one more thing out. You know that two years ago, we had the coldest weather in central Arizona in like 70 years? It was 18 degrees three mornings at my house in Casa Grande. We had to leave our swimming pool equipment running all night to keep it from freezing, because it's not designed to handle cold like that. The front page of our newspaper talked about how record heat was happening down in Dejanoa like the next day. Seven pages in, there was a little thing that says, "Oh, by the way, yesterday morning it was 13 degrees in Arizona City, the coldest temperature ever recorded in central Arizona." But you gotta dig back seven pages to find out that's what had happened. Now folks, I don't know whether the globe's warming or not. I don't know. But I can tell you this. People that have an agenda, as long as their cause is good, they have no compunction about lying to you. Including in the church. You better be unguarded. All right, enough said. Number three. "Bible is written in simple form, and there are not really any mysteries to its message, true or false." I remember a very popular Christian song a few years ago, one that I really liked, by a group that I enjoy hearing them sing their praise music. They said, "It's all straightforward, no mysteries. Just, you need to ask Jesus into your life." That's what the message was that they were singing. So if you'll look, let's go to Matthew 13. We mentioned this one a couple weeks ago, we'll bounce off of it, and then we'll head on to 1 Corinthians. But if you'll open up to the Gospel of Matthew, the story of Jesus here. Matthew 13. There are a lot of groups that are telling their people, "There's nothing really mysterious about the Bible, it's all just very simple, and, and you know, come to us, and, and we'll give you what you need." Matthew 13, verse 11. This is after the disciples said, "Why do you speak to him in parables?" And he says, "To you, disciples, it has been granted to know," look at this, "the mysteries of the kingdom of heaven." But to them, it's not been granted. Now, we talked about the reasons why, it has to do with people... Now, we talked about the reasons why, it has to do with people's hearts. So, Jesus apparently thinks there are some mysteries that are hidden in the Scriptures. Let's go to First Corinthians, chapter four, let's see if I got the references here. First Corinthians, chapter four. You know, they're all good. If you get it the wrong one, sometimes I'll start reading there and just keep right on reading. Where we, where we lived in Colorado, the... Where we lived in Colorado to, to, you know, to buy groceries and stuff, we had to go about eighty-five miles one direction. So, we drive to town on Montrose, our county seat, and we're driving back, and one of the passes you go over is called Dallas Divide. Beautiful picture of the San Juan Mountains, some of the most photographed and most beautiful mountains in America. And we're coming up the hill, and I see a car pulled off to the side. And I recognize it. It's a friend of mine from town. And so, I pull up behind him, I thought, "Oh, his car's broken down, he hit an elk, he hit a deer or something, that happens all the time on this hill." And I went up there, and I said, "Hey, Al, what you doing?" He said, "Oh, you know, there's a spring here, where you can, you can come off the side of the road, they stuck a pipe in there, you can get a fresh drink of water there." And he said, "When I stopped, I, I looked in the back, and I, I found this little New Testament on the backseat. And I just started reading, I couldn't stop reading." Hey, he's sitting in the backseat of his car on the side of the highway, just reading this Bible out for great. That's kinda the way it is. If you go to the wrong verse, keep reading, find something there you'll enjoy. First Corinthians four, one, "Let a man regard us in this manner, pulse at his servants of Christ," listen, "stewards of the..."
Mysteries.
Mysteries. First Corinthians thirteen, some of you will recognize this, it's called the Love Chapter. The most beautiful definition of love you will find anywhere is right here in First Corinthians, chapter thirteen. Paul says, "If I speak with the tongues of men," thirteen, one, "of men and angels, but do not have God's kind of love," that's agape love. Said, "I have become a noisy gonger, gonger, clanging symbol. And if I have the gift of prophecy," and listen to this, "and know all mysteries." Apparently, Paul thought there were mysteries. Jesus thought there were mysteries. Paul considered himself a messenger, revealing mysteries. "And have all knowledge and all faith so as to remove the mountains, but don't have love, I know nothing. If I give all my possessions to feed the poor, and if I deliver my body to be burned, but do not have love, it profits me nothing. God's love is patient, and it's kind, it's not jealous or boastful, it's not arrogant or rude, it does not assist him in its own way." God's love. Bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things, God's love. God's love, no faiths. Mysteries. So, you got your answer to, uh... Question three. Number four, "As long as a person has faith, God will accept that person as his and bless his life." Now, um... There's a strange thing in America that's, uh... See, I think, folks, I think religion is like an inoculation that you're given as a child. I notice, I don't, hoping that you or your grandkids weren't in Disneyland over Christmas. Did you hear there was, there's been an outbreak of measles from the people who went there? Foreigners that come from another country brought their germs with them, they got spread, and I don't know, but apparently several hundred people have gotten measles from them. And of course, the official answer is, oh, it was mostly people who hadn't been inoculated as children, that's why they got it. So, you know what they do in most of these inoculations? They give you a little bit of the, of the germ, or the bug, or whatever the problem is, so that your body will build up immunities to it, so if you get an exposure later on, then you won't get sick, you will have already built up a resistance to it. It's interesting. God makes things that way in the physical world, to illustrate for us the more important things. I've met many people who've got just enough of religiosity and spirituality that they have built up an immunity to anything spiritual or any truth from the Bible. They can't hear it. They can't see it. They're not interested. They developed an immune system, immunity to that. And I, my contention is, when I meet people and they hate Christianity, I love talking to those people, because I know what their problem is. It isn't that they hate Jesus. They hate what some church or some Christian did to them. I was told just today by a young man, "The worst problem we had in this business, in this industry, was a Christian woman, and for eighteen months, we were trying to solve a problem because she didn't like the seam." After they dried, saved all the carpet, put new pad in, reattached it, laid it back down, cleaned all the carpet in the house. She wanted all new carpet downstairs, all new carpet upstairs, because she wasn't happy with the way that seam came in. And so, finally, they went to Red Star Contractors and said, "We cannot, we've tried for eighteen months, we can't resolve the problem with this lady. We brought another company, another carpet company, and let them redo it. Will you please go see what we need to do to settle this?" And then she finally said, "Never mind. Choose Christians." By the way, there are other seams in our house much worse than that one. Had to do with the original insulation. So, most of the time, I find out people have problems with religious people that are not bearing good fruit. Oh, by the way, do you think when you come to stand before God and you say, "God, those Christians really ticked me off, and that's why I didn't, I didn't ever want to have anything to do with you." I think God might have something to say with that. I'm not asking you to tell me about somebody else. I'm talking about you and me, buddy. Well, let me call, let me call my, my, my favorite book writer. No, no, I'm gonna talk to him about his business, I'm talking to you about our business. The Bible says you're going to give account of yourself to God. And so, um... What about this thing, "As long as a person has faith"? See, America's infatuated with being spiritual. And there are a lot of people who think, "As long as you have faith, it's fine." I want us to look at Matthew twenty-three, of what Jesus had to say to some men who were, and that's, uh, that's on your little list there, uh, Matthew twenty-three. Jesus talking to some people who were men of faith. In fact, they were leaders in the church. In fact, they were the experts and authorities that all the communities went to to get explanation of what's right and what's wrong. Matthew twenty-three, I'm gonna start reading verse one. "Jesus spoke to the multitude, to the disciples, saying, 'The scribes and the Pharisees have seated themselves in the chair of modus,'" that is, in putting themselves as authorities, and, if you will, the distributors of the truth from God. "Therefore, all they tell you do and observe, but do not do according to their deeds; for they say things and do not do them. They tie up heavy loads, lay them on men's shoulders, but they themselves are unwilling to move them with so much as a finger. They do all their deeds to be noticed by men; they brought their phylacteries lengthened, tasseled the garment; they loved the place of honor, banquets in the chief seats, and respectful greetings in the marketplace, being called rabbi, which means teacher. But don't be called teacher, for one is your teacher and your all brothers; and do not call anyone earth your father, for one is your father who's in heaven; and don't be called leaders, for one's your leader, that's Christ; and the greatest among you will be your servant.'" These were men of faith. They went to church every week, they paid their tithes, they fasted, they gave alms to the poor. They were men of faith! These are the very men who conspired together with their Roman superiors to have Jesus the Christ murdered. Executed. So, as long as a person has faith, God will accept them? That's simply not true. All through the Bible, there are people who had faith, and even acted on faith, that did not have, did not have a relationship that was, and a walk that was pleasing to God. So, the act of that is no. By the way, you can have faith in a lot of different things. I've been among people who had faith in their faith. Now, I'm not trying not, I'm not trying to doublespeak or talk in circles on you, but they really have faith in their faith. "God, you have to do this, because look at my faith." It's like, and, not saying this to offend anybody, but just to be accurate. You've heard it said that there's power in prayer. I want you to know, there is no power in prayer. There is power in God. Prayer is the medium by which we connect with God, and we ask Him to act. But we have these super saints walking around, "Look at what my faith can do." No! Look what God can do! Praying is a good thing, but I want you to know, the Pharisees prayed every day! But when Jesus pulled open and showed what was going on inside, guess what? He said, "The Pharisee prayed to himself. I thank you, God, I'm not like this guy back here, this tax collector. I fast twice a week, I give alms to the poor, I give tithes of everything, even the plants growing in the garden. God, aren't you impressed with me?" Praying. Folks, there is no power in prayer. We need to understand, there's power in God. And yes, it's impossible to have a relationship with God without faith, but where's that faith to go? That faith is not in us having faith. That faith is in the unseen God, who's chosen to veil himself in secrecy, at least in the physical sense. And yet, he drops all around us things like, "A stone that says, 'Arastus paved this street with his own money,' he was the city treasurer. He's a real guy." God's like, "Hey, I got him up here, I threw a rock down there to tell you, yep, he's real." But if you wanna explain it away, and say, "Oh, there were lots of city treasurers named Arastus." Faith, yes, faith is to be endowed. Oh, and by the way, do you know how you get faith? Walk hard, exercise. I love watching those power walks in the morning, you know? It's a good thing. It's good. Unless you trip on the sidewalk, don't break your arm, but anyway, that's another story, for another day. "Look at my faith." Now, see, the faith comes from the Scripture. The Bible says that this is one of the great mysteries. This word implanted in the soil here, your heart, causes faith to grow. So, faith comes from hearing God's word, that's, God's kind of faith. You know, there are a lot of people that say, "Well, I have, I have faith in science." Some people have faith in the people running the anti-smoking organizations. And they would argue with me that, yes, fifty million, or fifty thousand people die a year in America from secondhand smoke. So, go study it for thirty-eight years. And the study goes, "I hate to tell you this, but it ain't so." So, of course, then what do you do? You attack the people. "You're promoting, oh, you're, you're questioning our integrity. We're carrying on such a noble cause here. Don't you understand, if we need to lie, it's okay? Just tell us the truth, okay? Just tell us the truth." That's what God does. And by the way, you tell the truth, might get you killed. It certainly will get you hated, okay? Because, you know, Jesus said, "If you hate somebody, you kill them." So, when the Bible says, "People are gonna kill you, think they're doing God a favor," um, they may not physically kill you, but then again, if, uh, you know, if they're a Muslim radical, they might cut your head off. Did you hear about the, was it twelve boys watching a soccer game all got beheaded just recently? Yeah, for, for watching, for watching a soccer game. Young boys, beheaded. But the experts keep telling us, "This is a religion of peace." Drink the Kool-Aid. That's what Jim Jones told everybody, "You need to drink this Kool-Aid, be good for you." Okay? Where's your trust? Where's your faith? It better be toward God. Number five, "Other than obvious historical interest, the events in the law and the prophets are of relatively little value in an understanding of God's actions today." Well, let's look over to First Corinthians. Are you still in First Corinthians, there? First Corinthians. First Corinthians ten. First Corinthians ten. Now, if you notice, I'm giving you out less handout sheets, and we're spending more time finding our way around the Bible. And that's really what I'm hoping to do, so that you just, you just get accustomed to going to find the answers right in the Bible. First Corinthians ten. "I don't want you to be unaware, brethren, that our fathers were all under the cloud and all passed through the sea." And listen to this crazy statement from Paul. "And all were baptized into Moses," say, "What?" Paul! "In the cloud and in the sea." "And they ate the same spiritual food," no, 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 Paul, it wasn't spiritual food. It was this unknown substance they called, what's it? Manna. He said, "No, they ate the same spiritual food, drank the same spiritual drink, for they were drinking from a spiritual rock, which followed them, and the rock was Jesus." Paul's flipped his gourd. He's flunked out of some of the classes that I passed in seminary. "No, no, this is not good hermeneutics, you can't do that, Paul." Apparently, you can when you begin to understand some of the mysteries of God. Now, Rick, that's a real dangerous thing. You, some folks could get led astray. Yep. Lots of them got led astray when I was standing up there teaching the traditions, too. "May God have mercy on me for that," and open their eyes and deliver from it. Do you see that Paul read all of these things that happened to the sons of Israel, and guess what? He understood that they were an illustration of a spiritual reality. Verse five, "Nevertheless, with most of them, God was not well pleased, for they were laid low in the wilderness." Listen to verse six, "These things happened as examples for us." Say, "Well, you, Rick, you understand, that was Paul writing the Corinthians almost two thousand years ago." Yeah? And the events he was talking about had happened twelve or thirteen hundred years before them. And he said, "Hey, Corinthian church, what happened twelve hundred years ago is about us and for us." And Paul, if he could stand here tonight physically, if God would send him here, he would say, "This is for you." But Paul, it's been two thousand years since you wrote that. He says, "I know, it's been over three thousand since this happened, but it was written for you, right here tonight in Florence, Arizona." That's part of the mysteries of the Scripture. So, these were examples that we shouldn't crave evil things, "And not be idolaters, as some were; as it's written, the people sat down to eat, drink, and stood up to play; nor let us act immorally, as some did, and twenty-three thousand fell in one day; nor let us try the Lord, as some of them did, and were destroyed by these serpents." Interesting. Why did God send snakes? He's sending snakes today. Said, "Well, you know, we don't ever have any snakes come in my church." What, what, wait, where's the, where's the? He's gonna pull the box out! Got some snakes, I'm telling you, it's a weird call, these guys up there. "Oh, I got my box of snakes." "Go ahead, Jack, you got faith, reach in there, grab one of them snakes out of there."
You're gonna get beaten, you know?
You know, there's still churches that do that. Deception. Who's the serpent in Genesis three? If you think Eve was talking to a snake in the tree, ah, you missed it! You're not gonna talk to some snake hanging in the tree. It was Satan. It's called the serpent. Who is the serpent? In the parables of Jesus, in, in the stories that he told, who are the birds of the air? It's Satan in the parables of darkness. This is talking about spiritual things. Yes, they had physical snakes that came in among them to illustrate for us today what happens for people who are stubborn and rebellious against God. And in verse eleven, he goes on. "These things happened to them as example; they were written for our instruction upon whom the ends of the ages have come therefore," based on what I've been telling you, it's a road sign. "Let him who thinks he stands take heed lest he fall." So, number five, this is far more important. All of those things that happened to them, those, those things are for us. They're not just some interesting little events. those things are for us. They're not just some interesting little events. So to say that, you know, they're of little value today, that's false. Paul says it's written for us. Number six, "The Bible is more interested in ceremonial action than moral issues like speaking lies." I want to come back to the truth thing once again. And so we'll go look at John, chapter eight, and then we're gonna, we're gonna have to wrap it up tonight. John 8, and then we got a, we've got a Colossians passage also to read here on this number six. John 8, verse forty-four. Jesus having a friendly little discussion with the religious leaders. In verse forty-three, Jesus talking to these religious leaders, said, "Why do you not understand what I'm saying? It's because you cannot hear my word." You and I know people that cannot hear God's word. Why? The cause of the condition in their heart. They may blame some person or some church they used to go to or whatever, but the reality, and the reality is, we've all been burned by religion. It stinks. And it was the religious people that murdered Jesus. Arranged it anyway. The Romans did it to please them. He said, "Why can't you hear my word? You are of your Father the devil, and you want to do his desires. He was a murderer from the beginning, does not stand in the truth. There's no truth in him. And whenever he speaks a lie, he speaks from his own nature." Now listen to this, "For he is a liar and the father of lies." What if your preacher lies? It's from Satan. What if your favorite political group lies? It's from Satan. What if your child lies to you? It's from Satan. Children mostly lie because it's what's most convenient for them, and they want what's most convenient for them. Groups lie because their cause is noble, and it's okay if they lie and it's for a good cause. And it's not in the eyes of God. And he says, "Every lie, the source is Satan and something that he is doing." He is the liar and the father of lies. Whether you're lying to get people to quit smoking, or you're lying to influence people's conduct in their life, or if you're lying to gain a political advantage, it's from the forces of darkness. If you're lying to promote your church, then whose church is it really? Because it's not God's. He deals in truth. Jesus said, "I am truth." One other passage that we should see on this same subject here in Colossians, uh, Galatians, where was it? Oh, Colossians 2, Colossians 2. We're going to conclude on this and sing a little song to have in your heart when you take off tonight. I don't know about you, but I've, I'm singing it and humming it all the way home. Now, he writes a lot of interesting thing in Colossians, chapter two. He starts off with a warning in verse eight. "See to it, no one takes you captive." The Bible assumes that you know that there are people that are working to deceive you for one reason or another, to gain some advantage or to gain something financially from you or whatever. "See to it, no one takes you captive," this is verse eight that's not on the list there, but it's right there in Colossians 2:8 while we're in the neighborhood. "How would you be taken captive through philosophy and empty deception according to traditions of men, according to the elementary principles of the world, rather than according to Christ?" We're going to come back to this next week, but let's go down to verse 16. "Therefore, let no one act as your judge in regard to food, or drink, or in respect to a festival, or a new moon, or a Sabbath day, things which are a mere shadow of what is to come; but the substance belongs to Christ." You see, the ceremonies and the rituals, this is what the Bible has to say about them. "Don't let anybody take you captive about those things, because they are all simply shadows." To point you to Jesus, the real substance is in Jesus Christ. And so, "Let no one keep defrauding you of your prize by delighting in self-abasement." The worship of angels. By the way, you know what the trans, you know, angel is a transliteration. Alpha from the Greek to the A, the Nu to an N, the Gamma to a G. Angel, literally translated, is messenger. By the way, that is the word that is used to describe these spiritual creatures that we'll talk about in the, in a couple of weeks here, just very briefly, but a little bit about angels and about the forces of darkness. But it can be the worship of messengers. You got any religious leaders being idolized and worshiped in our world today? Why, Rick, isn't that what you want everybody to do at the windmill? Ahhh! In case you didn't get it, I just want to be real loud in case anybody goes off. I want to see Jesus Christ be your Lord. I want you to see in God's word for yourself what God has to say for you. And I want Him to guide you, and if where He guides you is different than where I go, God bless you. Because I want to see Jesus Christ as your Lord. That's what God wants. He wants to be Lord in your life. He doesn't want your pastor to be. He doesn't want your favorite teacher to be. He doesn't, he doesn't want, He wants to be Lord in your life. He's just God. Is that okay? He just made you and everything around us. Is that okay if He wants a little respect and wants you to know it?